I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Willmet Public Schools, District 39, this Monday, September 15, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Anne Hart.
Here.
Judy Berlin.
Here.
Erin Stone.
Here.
Kristin DeCastro.
Here.
Amy Baling.
Here.
Alison Papalas.
Here.
Katie Hilton.
Here.
Principal Dana Nasiakos is here to introduce Mackenzie students to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening. You guys are in for a treat tonight. I have with me nine amazing fourth graders that are here to help us kick off the 75th birthday of Mackenzie. And with every great birthday comes a few really special gifts. So tonight, we are here to share with you two of our gifts to help us celebrate our 75th. The first being our new guidelines for success, perseverance, compassion, and responsibility. And then finally, our students will be singing our new school song. And many of these fourth graders had a part in creating the school song alongside our wonderful music teacher, Mrs. Havala. So we are going to get started.
Hi, my name is Evelyn, and I have a definition for perseverance. Perseverance means never give up, even when something is hard. It's about trying again, learning from mistakes, and keep a positive attitude until you reach your goal.
Hi, my name is Liam, and an example is when you're learning to ride your bike, you keep practicing even if you fall off a few times.
Hi, my name is Grace, and a kid-friendly phrase is "keep trying, keep growing."
Hi, my name is Topper, and the definition for compassion for students is compassion means caring about others and showing kindness. It's noticing when someone needs help and choosing to do something to make their day better.
Hi, my name is Tate. An example of compassion is if a friend is sad, you sit with them or share something kind to make them smile.
Hi, my name is Seraphina. A kid-friendly phrase is "kind hearts make a crime in school."
My name is Meadow, and a definition for responsibility is responsibility means taking care of yourself, your choices, and your school. It's about doing what you say you'll do, following directions, making choices that will keep you and others safe.
Hi, my name is Addison. For example, turning in your homework on time and cleaning up after yourself.
My name is Hannah, and a kid-friendly phrase is "I do the right thing even when no one is watching."
We are now going to sing our school song.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, we have to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you all very much for being here, and thank you for sharing those important words and definitions with us. And we know that those are really important aspects of being a successful Cheetah. So thank you very much for sharing, and we're excited for the Mackenzie birthday party later this week. Some of us might attend as well, as we love a good birthday party. So, and in appreciation for you guys being here this evening, we have a small gift that you can take on the way out, and then you can meet your parents in the lobby. So thank you so much. Thank you, parents. Well done. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thank you. Adorable. Thank you. All right. I now seek a motion to approve the minutes of the August 25, 2025, Board of Education Budget Hearing and Regular and Executive Session Meetings. I move to approve the Board of Education minutes for the August 25, 2025, Budget Hearing and Regular and Executive Session Meetings. May I have a second?
Second.
The motion been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? Okay. Seeing none, all of those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying yea. Yea. The motion carries. This is now an opportunity for the public to address the board on any topic. Are there any audience members that would like to speak at this time? All right. If so, please stand to address the board. I must remind guests to state your name and community of residence, and by board directive, you are allowed three minutes to address the board or one minute if you have previously spoken.
Hi, my name is Miriam Ovington. I'm a resident of Glenview. I have a daughter at High Crest Middle School and an incoming kindergartner at Ramona. I'm here to address the board about my concerns over iPad usage. I had something written out, but after having access to my daughter's iPad, today I decided to scratch all of that and just speak from the heart. I literally broke down in tears after reviewing the amount of information that our children are being provided on an iPad device. I reviewed the Mobile Learning Program Handbook as well yesterday night with my daughter, and I underlined a lot of things that I felt were very concerning and questionable. I would like to read a few things that I did underline. I understand that utilizing the iPad daily, I mean, I'm sorry. I understand that part of this learning program, the goals of the Mobile Learning Program are as follows: to transform students from consumers of information to creators of content, to provide access to anytime, anywhere learning, to increase student engagement and ownership in learning, and to support the information literacy requirements of the CCSS and NET standards to promote District 39 learning goals for the 21st century. I did have a few questions about these goals. I'm wondering why our children are being turned or transformed, as you so nicely put it, from consumers of information to creators of content. I understand that we're in the 21st century, and technology appears to be very popular at the moment, and I just can't help but ask myself if District 39 is falling also under pressure of that being the route to go when it comes to teaching our kids? I'm wondering if student engagement was an issue before. And also, I did underline a part at the very bottom where it says, "With accessibility to devices anywhere at any time, you, District 39, can ensure that the devices are used safely, responsibly, and respectfully through some helpful hints and advice to use and care the device." I don't understand how that could be something that you can so confidently ensure when you are asking for our children to follow a list of things to keep them safe. Therefore, the children are really the ones responsible for ensuring whether this device is safe or not.
Thank you. Would any other audience members like to address the board this evening?
Hi, my name is Penelope Ovington, and I am a resident of Glenview. I go to HMS, and in some of my classes, most of our 40 minutes is devoted to iPad time. For example, my math teacher, Ms. Mazel, will have us on Big Ideas Math or iXL, both for class and for homework. And meanwhile, in reading and writing with my homeroom teacher, or in reading and writing with my homeroom teacher, Ms. Batzer, we do almost nothing on the iPads. In Spanish, we do game kit and flashcards, and in digital media, we are almost always on them. What I think is that we should be on them for only 15% to 20% of the day, because when you do this every single school day, it wears out our eyes, like the treads on my old bike. In case you haven't realized, I'm addressing the board all about my concerns for being on the iPad for too long. One of my friends has a phone, an iPad, and an Apple Watch. And whenever I go to her house, she mostly wants to play Roblox or watch TikTok. Personally, I think those devices are robbing her from her childhood. Recently, my parents sent an email to all of my teachers asking to limit my time on iPads at school. So when the rest of my class was typing with devices, I was typing with nothing but my pencil and paper. Going back to my math class, quoting my teacher, 95% of our homework would be on the iPads. Think about that number, 95%. That's a crazy amount for just math class only. I think I've made my point, so thank you in advance.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alina Resnick. I am a Willmet resident, and I have a third grader at Ramona and incoming kindergarteners next year. We moved here from Chicago for Willmet's Great Schools. And indeed, schools have bright new air-conditioned classrooms, relatively small class sizes, and highly educated teachers, which we love. However, it concerns me that with all the resources and all the big budget and instructional material fees that increase annually, we face every increase in push to buy and use technology, especially iPads, but also now TV-like smart boards, at the expense of paying teachers for extra hours that they're asked to work or dismissing math teachers in junior high despite pleas from the students and other teachers. I would much rather the schools kept their old tech projectors and had computers for technology class only one or two times a week to learn to type and paid teachers the difference. Tech use also comes with opportunity costs for kids on missing out on real-life skills from building focus to academics, handwriting, reading, concrete math, applied science, to soft skills, loving learning for the sake of learning and not for rewards, which iXL is full of, building real-life relationships with teachers and peers. I have to ask the board, since you're the ones who create the curriculum and approve all the curriculum aids in terms of technology, is it real necessary to have technology at their fingertips in middle school, as someone said here? Is it necessary to bring iPads to library class and fill out missing alphabet labers using fingers and not pencils? Are 164 apps, not including Google Maps, not including YouTube, and not including Safari, are they really necessary for learning? And has anyone really read through all the privacy agreements for each single one of them? All of 164 apps and Google Maps and everything else? And can anyone here, setting, or someone who can point me to, who can vouch for the safety of our kids whenever each new update comes out? I hear the mantra that they need to be fluent with technology because they are here to be ready for new career and the technological world we live in. But it's not true. Kid's success in technological world won't depend on them having unrestricted access -- sorry, unrestricted access to iPads in kindergarten, or even fourth grade, or frankly, even sixth grade. Technology evolves so quickly, and it's already extremely intuitive to learn. Thank you for attention.
Thank you. Are there any other audience members who would like to speak this evening?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lily Yang. I'm a mother of eighth grader and the third grader. First, I want to thank all the teachers and the school board for doing your best to help us raise our kids right. I also want to be clear, I'm not anti-technology. In fact, I promoted ChatGPT long before most people had even heard about it. But tonight, I'm here to ask for cutting down kids' screen time. I'm deeply concerned that the screen has taken over our kids' lives. Big screens in classrooms replacing blackboards. iPad replacing pen and paper, and smartphones replacing real social interaction. I try to manage my kids' screen time at home, but it's a constant battle, one that often ends in frustration and tears. I realize I was asking too much of my kids, asking them to fight against not just temptation, but an entire environment designed to keep them glued to screens. That's why I'm here tonight, to ask for your help in cutting down screen time. The evidence is very clear. Excessive screen time is harming our kids. Kids on screen seven-plus hours a week are three times more likely to develop myopia. For eighth graders in WJHS, with 80% of classroom time on big screen, 80% work time on iPad, then constant cellphone usage after school, many kids easily exceed seven-plus hours a day on screen. National scores in reading and math are falling directly linked to more screen time. Teachers see students struggling to concentrate right by hand and connect with peers. Pediatricians, a run of rising sleep and mental health problems, all tied to screens. In the end, more screen time does not mean tech literacy. Homework on iPad after -- homework on iPads often turns into endless scrolling on YouTube or TikTok or millions of other websites competing for our kids' attention. We cannot ignore those warning signs. We cannot let the technology, no matter how convenient, replace the fundamental skills and human connections our kids need to thrive. So what can we do? I urge the school board to take those actions. First, cut down screen-based teaching time. Let's bring back blackboard, whiteboard, and hands-on lessons back. Two, push for more pen and paper. Require that significant portion of classwork, note-taking, and assignment be done by hand.
Thank you.
Three, ban cellphone use.
As a reminder, you may have another minute later on the agenda when we have public comment again. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Please go ahead. State as a reminder your name and community of residence, please.
Hello, yes, my name is Andre Moraviv. Thank you so much. And first of all, I would like to thank your teachers, and it's a great school. My kids are very happy. I just have some concerns, and my biggest concern is about the screen time and apps that are installed on school iPads. I used to give music lessons to many middle and high school students in public schools in Texas for four years. And I can tell that students who spent a lot of their time playing video games or living in virtual reality were not as successful in school subjects compared to other kids. Also, that kids had difficulties in building connections with other kids or finding real friends. And of course, too much screen time can lead to eye strain and headaches, sleep disruptions due to blue light exposure, reduced attention, less physical activity and social interactions. And I just read yesterday some articles in American Academy of Pediatricians suggests no more than one, two hours per day of screen time. Children age from six to 12. And just question is if we follow those recommendations or no? And do we include smart boards when we calculate those one, two hours or no? And I've heard, so we still, we have YouTube is available on iPads and App Store and also Safari. And my biggest concern is here, so I think that should be blocked and excluded from iPads at all times due to exposure to illegal content. And I think kids can accidentally go to some websites, and this is the biggest concern. And it's, I just read yesterday, I also work in IT field, and Safaris could be disabled from screen settings. I'm sure you know how to do this, right? If no, I mean, it's maybe, I just asked ChatGPT by myself how to disable it, just protect it by password. If no, there are some, I don't know. Are we using any, like, maybe it's already used, like MGM tools? It's like special management tools, right? That if you purchase subscriptions, I did research yesterday, it's like $5 per device per year. I mean, they can allow you to disable Safaris from iPads, maybe do more variety of what you want to do on iPads, like blocking some apps or restrict students. And I agree a little bit with previous statements about, like, do like writing, especially, I would.
Thank you.
Time, yeah.
Three minutes.
Yeah, thanks so much, yeah.
Are there any other audience members this evening?
Hi, my name is Sarah Hill. I am the mother of a third grader and a kindergartner who are a little bit disgruntled that I'm here speaking against iPads. We also moved into the district right before Norah started kindergarten, and we've been really pleased with her education so far, and we're really grateful for your service here on the board. We're grateful for the service of her teachers, and we're really happy to live in this community. But I would again like to echo what these advocates are advocating for against iPad usage in classrooms. I know that it's a popular toy, but I don't see a need for it in the classroom outside of a technology class and occasional testing. I know that it provides a big distraction for our kids and that can lead to disruptive behavior and disruptive apps. I would like to propose a suggestion. And there was a complaint from teachers that a ban on YouTube and a ban on, like, a really comprehensive ban would be disruptive to their teaching style. I'd like to suggest that we implement two Wi-Fi systems in every school, one for the students that is severely limited. I think we can all attest to being in a public Wi-Fi that's really limited and how much less engaging that Wi-Fi network is. But that one specifically for the teachers that can be a little bit less restrictive so they can access all of the tools with their fully-formed brains that they need to. Again, I would just like to thank you all. I really strongly believe that kids should be interacting with each other in their free time in their classrooms, that they should be using pens and papers, paper to develop their motor skills and their friendship skills and their social skills. I think that we as adults all really fight the urge to pick up our iPads and our tablets and our phones, and I can't even imagine what a temptation it is for these kids. Thank you again, and thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at this time? Okay. Thank you for being here and for your advocacy. And just as a reminder, the board uses this time to listen to community questions and concerns, but we do not respond immediately to individual requests and cannot take formal action on non-agenda items. But we appreciate you taking the time out to be here and to provide your perspective this evening, so thank you. And again, there will be one additional time on the agenda of the public comment. We will now move on to board reports, starting with committee reports. Facility Development, Mrs. DeCastro.
Thank you. On Monday, September 8, 2025, the Facilities Development Committee met as part of the Board's Committee of the Whole Meeting. Mr. Boltemeyer reviewed the process for the Summer 2026 Project. The current plan includes a project bidding period in October and potential board action in November. Mr. Boltemeyer, Mr. Demonte, and Dr. Kremis Solly met with the village of Willmet to review the project to get the village's perspective and will present options in the future.
Thank you. School Finance, Mrs. Baling?
I think we did not have any school finance at the recent meeting.
Okay, thank you. Then we will move on to Strategy Committee, Ms. Stone.
Yes. On Monday, September 8, the Strategy Committee met as part of the Board's Committee of the Whole Meeting. That time was focused on an in-depth review and discussion of the strategic plan action steps for this school year. Following the District Strategic Advisory Team, or DSAT, review of these plans, the board reviewed and provided feedback as well. The final presentation and approval of these proposed action steps will be provided later on this evening's agenda.
Great. Look forward to that, thank you. And then Liaison Reports. We'll start with Community Review Committee, Mrs. Papalas.
Thank you. I attended the Community Resource Committee meeting on Tuesday, September 10. The CRC kicked off the new year by nominating and approving their executive board, including voting Amy Peters to serve as president of CRC. Note also that members at large are being recommended for approval later in tonight's agenda. At the meeting, the committee discussed a number of possible topics that they may choose to study this year. They intend to finalize that choice, I think, at their next meeting scheduled for October 14.
Great, thank you. We will then move on to Educational Foundation. Also, Mrs. Papalas, your evenings have been busy. Thank you.
Back to back. Okay, so on, Dr. Kremis Solly and I attended the Ed Foundation meeting last Monday, September 9. The foundation discussed goals for the upcoming school year, including creating an Innovative Teacher Award, which is a new idea. As in years past, the Ed Foundation plans to host three fundraisers this year. Bingo Night, just to get these out on your calendars early. Bingo Night on November 14, Paddle Night on February 7, and Trivia Night on April 18. The Ed Foundation's next meeting is Monday, October 13.
Great, thank you. And now we will go on to District Strategic Advisory Team, or the DSAT, Mrs. Baling and Mrs. Papalas.
I will share that report. As Ms. Stone mentioned, DSAT met to review the proposed action steps for the school year for our strategic plan and provide feedback. After our meeting, we, as a board, reviewed the action steps at our Committee of the Whole Meeting on September 8, and later tonight, we'll review that presentation and vote to approve those action steps. And the DSAT will meet again on February 12 for a mid-year update.
Great, thank you. Illinois Association of School Boards, Mrs. Berlin.
There really hasn't been any change since my last report, so that makes this quick.
Thank you, and we'll stick with you for legislative updates.
Which might make you think that I don't want to talk, but the truth is, there's been no change since my last report.
All good, thank you very much. Okay, and I will turn it over to Dr. Kremis Solly for information items.
Thank you, and I will just acknowledge that also at the Committee of the Whole Meeting, the board under New Business conducted a policy review regarding residency and enrollment and also engaged in a really productive conversation regarding technology. So I want to acknowledge and thank the board for your discussion regarding both of those. In terms of informational items, first of all, written communication. The board received written communication from Maria Reiki and Evanston Skokie, District 65 School Board Member, regarding ClearGov. And for administrative announcements, we're really excited to be kicking off our parent education events. Here in District 39, we believe in the importance of connecting with our families to offer informative and relevant parent education events. And so our first parent education event of the year is titled "Navigating School Safety Scenarios: How Would You Respond?", and it's set for this Wednesday at 11:00 a.m. And it's set for this Wednesday at eleven AM and will be held virtually over Zoom. So we encourage everyone to consider joining us. Uh, we've sent out registration information via each of the principals newsletters. Um, that's also on our district website as well. Um, and we'll be joined at this uh, particular parent ed event uh, by representatives from Family Service Center, Key Coalition, the Willmet Police Department, and Be Smart. So we encourage everyone to consider registering for that event. And if you're not able to join us live, uh, that will be available afterwards as a recording. In terms of Freedom of Information Act requests, the district did not process any FOIA's this month. Uh, but there are a few pending and we'll report on those for next month.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, um, we will go on to the strategic plan updates. I believe Kelly Jackson is going to present for us this evening.
Right, um, so yes, tonight we have our uh, twenty-one through twenty-six strategic plan action steps. Just a little context, a little background before we get started. Uh, in January twenty twenty-one, the District Thirty-nine Strategic Planning Team, uh, which was comprised of staff, parents, students, and community members, and leaders of other community organizations. We've met throughout the year. We engaged in developing this multi-year strategic plan with the help of consultants from uh, the Consortium for Educational Change. Uh, we collected feedback, uh, we, uh, we reported out at the board meetings. And um, we celebrated a successfully um, approved strategic plan with action steps that first year. Now we are in our final year of this strategic plan and we are excited to present and then submit for approval. The last year of our plan's action steps for all of you this evening. In doing that, we'd like to acknowledge both um, the participation and input received from the board and from our district, district strategic advisory team in this process. I will handle goal one. Um, so goal one is our student achievement and growth goal. And it is about ensuring a differentiated education that provides a strong foundation of rigorous academic learning. And you can see the strategies there on the screen that we um, aim to address through all of our action steps and work on the school. On the next screen, you can see um, that these are our action steps for this year. And so the first one is one that's a holdover, it's something that we do every year, but it's really about analyzing student data in collaborative teams um, after each benchmark period. So we look at MAP data, AIMS Web Plus data, classroom performance, and more. Um, and we use that to inform adjustments to tier one or um, the instruction that all students get. Or to identify students who may need um, a tier two uh, support, so some intervention, or maybe even more support or intervention. Or it could be enrichment. Um, so that these, um, how we evaluate um, all of our data determines whether we intervene or enrich the learning for all of our students. Um, the second action step is to introduce the foundational principles of universal design for learning to support planning and use of differentiation in the classroom. We have some consultants lined up to help us with um, sharing that information with staff. Um, the third is continued from last year, and this is uh, to support the implementation and professional learning for our recently adopted curricula. So you can see that we're in year two of both Bridges Math, Math and Ufly foundational skills. Um, we're in year three of Number Corner, which is a component of that Bridges Math curriculum. And then we are in our first year for six through eight social studies, but our second year for fifth grade social studies. So we have a lot of exciting things going on in our classrooms. Um, the fourth is related to that. We uh, have teams right now piloting and working to evaluate multiple curricula in grades K through eight English Language Arts in order to make a recommendation for implementation for next school year. Uh, the next goal or the next action step is to expand the reach of instructional coaching through an increase of in, in individual and team coaching cycles. If you'll recall, last year was our first year of instructional coaching. So this is just expanding on that and growing um, the instructional coaching across all of our schools. Next, provide the teachers with goal setting template and specific examples to use for year-round academic goal setting and reflection. And in this again is an expansion upon um, the past few years of work with goal setting. And it, um, really now we're going to our teachers, we're asking them what else do they need? So this becomes just a fabric of what we do. Um, and if there's uh, templates or specific examples or anything else that they're looking for, uh, we will collect that information and, and support them that way. Um, next is uh, the implementation and evaluation of the effectiveness of a new grades five through eight academic schedule for the school year. We will gather feedback throughout the year and make any recommendations for next steps. Uh, part of that schedule has included a homeroom uh, period where we have curated and implemented tier one executive functioning lessons. So again, tier one is, is that instruction for everybody. So all students across the five-eight um, campus are receiving instruction in executive functioning um, as a part of that homeroom period. And finally, we felt, reflect on and refine current building MTSS systems and responses to improve student learning, enhance efficiency, and improve our uh, response times and address resource allocation. And again, this is something that builds on previous action steps, um, just to take a look at our practices and make sure that we're constantly improving.
The next goal is goal two, supportive community. And while goal one really focuses on that rigorous academics, um, goal two really focuses on the rest of the students. So it's really about um, the social, emotional, and behavioral needs and helping our students feel a sense of belonging and really um, helping them feel like they are a part of our school community. So the strategies on there are really to implement um, consistent proactive curriculums addressing these and strengthen that sense of belonging and engagement. When we look at the action steps, um, the first one is to implement an expanded scope and sequence for the Wayfinder curriculum in grades five through eight using our new homeroom structure. So uh, Kelly already talked a little bit about that new structure and we've got new lessons to really implement across the board for our students to really work on that social, emotional learning as well as their emotional regulation. And you'll notice that at the end of some of these, there are a couple of double asterisks. Those are related to the community review committee's recommendations from last year. So we incorporated some of their recommendations into this, the goal two of sense of belonging. Uh, the second action step is to pilot a reporting tool for social, emotional learning skill development. And so we're really looking at, we've been implementing uh, social, emotional learning curriculum at the K-four level. And we're really working on how do we report this? How do we let students know how they're doing in this area and how do parents receive that communication? So that's something that's going to be worked on at the K-four level this year. Uh, the third one is to integrate monthly themes of inclusion and belonging into our district-wide communications as well as our activities for staff, students, and families. And our focus again here is on that sense of belonging. We want every student family member to feel like they are a member of this community. We want our staff to feel like this is a home for them. This is, we want everybody here to feel that sense of belonging, and so we're continuing to focus on that. Uh, the next one is to optimize our current building MTSS teams and systems, um, systems and responses in developing and aligning our tier one. So that's the curriculum for everybody, tier two, which is kind of those interventions that we provide for some students, and tier three, which is more intensive instruction. And when we, Kelly talked about doing this for academics, this is for looking at that SEL practices, for that social, emotional learning for our students and making sure that we address them at all levels of need and that we have an intensity of support that can help all of our students thrive. The next one is to provide training in CHAMPs at the kindergarten through fourth grade level and restorative practices at the fifth through eighth grade level. These are classroom-based systems to help support student, student behavior, um, as well as help them understand what the expectations are in different classes. We've been doing a lot of work with the foundations at the tier one, so that overall school behavior, and this is really moving that into the classroom. So we're identifying groups of teachers at both the K-four and five-eight level to help get some more training and bring that back um, building wide in these areas. Uh, number six is to research and evaluate existing and available mental health and SEL screeners to identify both needs and propose a selection for the, for the next school year. Uh, this state of Illinois, um, in the Illinois State Board of Education has required that we have a mental health screener for all students effective in the twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight school year. And so we want to make sure that we take the time to really evaluate what's out there and find something that's going to be really effective for meeting that mandate as well as providing the information that we need in order to help support our students. And the last one is to task a student advisory group at each school to engage in problem solving. That focuses really on increasing the sense of belonging, idea generation, and using supportive staff leadership. So again, we want to work on that sense of belonging, but in this one, we really want to bring our students into the problem solving around this, so that we're getting that student voice.
All right, goal three is, uh, has a focus on the staff and faculty within our schools, supporting students. The strategies have remained fairly consistent through the course of the five-year strategic plan. And we have specific action steps for this coming school year. The first five action steps continue to be a part of our work this year. They have been in years past as well, um, but we're continuing to, to implement those and fully, and further develop them. Action step six is new for us this year and we're making a purposeful effort during our professional learning days, our institute days, where we engage with staff and um, opportunities to learn about the cultural celebrations and observations of our students and making sure our staff are as informed as possible about what our families and students um, experience outside of the school. Number seven, the action step related to onboarding new staff. We recognize that at the beginning of the school year, we have dedicated three days to onboarding our staff new to District thirty-nine. And then our building principals take it from there. And at each school, work with our new staff to make sure they're fully informed about the practices that are coming forward each month. And we want to make sure our schools are aligned with those um, topics and those areas of information that we're providing to new staff. So it's a way to make sure that while each of our schools are, are unique and different, that, that there's an underlying foundation that's very similar across all six of our schools. Number eight focuses on staff attendance. So if you've listened to these reports over the course of the last couple of years, you've heard us talk about the attendance of our faculty and staff and hoping that so many of the other areas that we're targeting will positively impact the staff attendance that um, is reported on the school report card as well as our strategic plan. And we just haven't seen the growth that we had expected over the course of that time. And so this year, we're making a purposeful action step of implementing at least two strategies to focus in on this area with all of the staff members in District thirty-nine. Likely we'll start with some um, specific awareness of staff attendance for, for each one of us and how um, often we're not able to be at work. So more to come on that as we uh, fully develop that through the course of this school year. But our intention is to focus on awareness and then um, working to, to address that. Hope, hopefully see a positive change at the end of this school year with regard to that data. The last action step, number nine, is a direct outcome of a DEIB task force that we had implemented about three years ago now. It comprised staff, parents, board members, administrators, and we're looking for ways to um, enhance the hiring practices and retention of our employees of color. And these were specific action steps that were an outcome of that task force. So this year, we plan to finish out those tasks that were um, directed from that task force. Mr. Demonte has goal four.
Goal four, uh, family partnerships. We're strengthening partnerships by connecting, collaborating, and communicating with families and communities to advance teaching and learning. So our action steps for this year, the first one is expand outreach to intergenerational caring adults of current students. So we recognize it's uh, there are different generations of um, caregivers uh, that are assisting our kids with school. And making sure that we uh, extend an invitation to get them either into the schools. We have a couple of schools doing great things with grandparents days, um, looking across the district and seeing if we can replicate that success across our, our six schools. Uh, community members without current students, so we do have um, community members who don't have uh, kids in schools of all generations, ages. Mather's Place in town, getting, finding a way to connect uh, our community members that don't have students with us uh, in here. Uh, many of those people are here because of the great schools, they had kids come through them, or they just want something to do. And we're going to look for ways to, to get them engaged and involved. Alumni, so New Trier High Schools in general do a great job with this, elementary schools typically do not. But we can uh, maybe uh, have the same success by keeping uh, in contact with our uh, kids that leave our system. There are alumni events that happen at New Trier, could we extend those events and, and kind of have them around the same time? We have people that come back to the community, maybe that day after New Trier does their events, we can have something here. We've had a couple of groups come through our schools. They had a great, this year already, I think, two, um, two different schools who had just had a great time reliving their memories and reconnecting. And, oh, is this teacher still here or, you know, that, that kind of thing that uh, takes place? And then local organizations to strengthen connections, partnerships, and support. So, so taking a look at the different organizations that are in Willmet and seeing how we can complement one another um, or make sure that they're getting our information or getting them into our schools. The second action step is engaging and informing families through multiple diverse channels to provide resources and information supporting our partnership for the advancement of teaching and learning. So not everybody consumes information the same way. Uh, we have mentioned this before, but we're going to put some um, additional work into it this year of just making sure that the information we get out is not just an email, it's not just through our social media channels. So um, how else could that look to make sure it's in the way that people consume what, what they're looking at? Number three, create guidance documents for the use of artificial intelligence by teachers, students, parents to can uh, support uh, student learning. So there's some mandates that are out there that we start this work, um, and we, in the summer, uh, August fifteenth, I believe, uh, had a workshop with a cross-section of different positions across the district uh, who work with kids of different ages. We had a handful of parents that joined us and we had a handful of students that joined us. And we created some one-page documents. I am waiting any day for those to return from the consulting company, uh, the facilitator that we used that day. She did an amazing job, um, so amazing that we invited her back uh, for our two institute days uh, for her to work with our teachers. And she will also be delivering the October uh, parent education event virtually. Um, but it's a great opportunity for parents to learn a little bit about how AI uh, is operating out there uh, in the realm of our kids. So those documents, they'll be published um, to the various constituent groups any, any day. Number four, define, educate, and communicate a clear philosophy for the use of technology at school to support teaching and learning. So some of this work began at the beginning of the school year because we needed to have a common vocabulary. So that way our teachers are uh, using the same language that our parents can easily digest and understand. That's representative of the work that is being done when technology is used. So you've heard of the active learning and use or the passive learning and use, and we're going to continue to use that language as well as reflect upon how we're using technology here in district. Those conversations still continue to this day. One is happening uh, on Wednesday through our department and grade level meetings. So um, there's a commitment there to continue to look at that. And then refine and implement programming to welcome new uh, District Thirty-nine students and families throughout the year. So our PTAs and O's have taken on that function um, to various degrees depending on the school. So it's onboarding families, if you will, into our system, connecting them with other families that may be new or to how it operates or who to go to for various things. We have uh, this happening uh, in some of our schools to a great degree of just, this is just a reflection upon what some of our schools are doing. And again, try to replicate that success across the district. So this might be kind of a low lift, but um, more of just a, a look at what we're doing and, and then continuing that work. And the last action step is design and prepare to launch for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven school year. Transition supports for incoming seventh grade students at Willmet Junior High School. In previous um, in previous years, we had worked on the transition between elementary school and high crest and it had gone very well. Adding new events, adding webinars, um, just doing a variety of different activities to get kids and families into the school. We want to see that success uh, uh, kind of work at the junior high, making sure as our families, kids, and families uh, transition from high crest to the junior high, that we can get activities and get our kids. transition from Highcrest to the junior high, that we can get activities and get our kids in the building and and try to get them maybe in the spring instead of the fall to cross that threshold. So that any kind of anxiety that happens to be there from going from one school to another or new friendships that get established, we can take some of that away. So working on that next transition for our kids and families.
All right, goal five is the stewardship of resources. All right, so five ac- action steps for the current year and goal five. Items one through three, we've had each of these years and there are things that we many times talk about regularly at at the committee of the whole. We do have two new ones that I'd like to highlight. Number four, we're going to take a look at our use of non-traditional classroom spaces within the buildings. One of the things that I think as the admin team, we know that within our buildings, we're using, you know, every bit of space that we have and many times people are creative. And so I think most people have a good idea of what a traditional classroom space might might look like and what kind of services or meetings might be occurring. But let's take a look at some of these smaller spaces where there might be one staff member in between one and four students. Or maybe it's multiple staff members collaborating. So we'd love to share that with the board and the community. And then number five is reviewing the sustainability audit and what work has been accomplished. I believe that audit was done roughly six years ago. And as we work through it, I know some of the items on there will be will show as haven't been completed. And others will have been considered and either are, you know, still things to work towards or some of them just might be cost prohibitive. But it'd be something useful from a facility stand facility and operations standpoint to look back on and re- and review at at a meeting.
And as a reminder, all the updates for our key performance indicators are available on our district thirty nine strategic plan dashboard. And we will be updating that throughout the year as we update all of you on the progress we make. We have time now for any questions or comments. If I might, I'd just like to take a minute. This is the fifth year of our strategic plan and there has been a lot learned throughout the process. This is the first time in as long as anyone can remember that the district undertook a multi-year strategic plan. And so we did so with a little bit of trepidation and not quite certain how this would all unfold. But I'd like to express my gratitude to the board for your support of this multi-year plan so that we can really focus in and accomplish important work within our schools. And then also for our gold champions who jumped into leading this in some new ways. And I really have appreciated their partnership and leadership for each of the goals and the strategies in our annual action steps, along with all of our administrative team, many of whom are sitting in the back here today, and our teachers and staff who support this work throughout our schools. So we're just really, really grateful for everyone's support of this work. Our families and our students will have the opportunity again to engage in this planning work as near the end of this year, second semester starting probably in February. We will go out to our community again and ask for input and feedback on what our next strategic plan might include. So a key element of this year's action steps is to look ahead into the next five years and gather some input and feedback so that we can plan for what that might look like. So we'll be holding some focus groups and doing some surveys and asking parents, asking students, asking staff, teachers, community members to weigh in on what will come next. But in the near future, we're really excited about the work that lays ahead for us and and grateful for the support of our community.
Thank you. Board members, are there any other questions or comments? Mrs. Pathless?
I know that we have seen this multiple times, but I would just like to say thank you and echo what Dr. Kremis always said, that I know that it takes a ton of work, you know, to make the presentation, but also to do all of the steps. So and I appreciate how clearly it's laid out and the KPIs and how we can take account of where we are in the goals. And I just appreciate all the work. So thank you. I look forward to the next strategic plan. That'll be kind of fun. So thank you.
Any other board members? Okay, Kelly, I just had one quick question. I know you mentioned that a lot of the action steps and plans are kind of coming out of the work and the learning over the course of the last four years of this plan. But specifically, when we look at the action steps presented tonight, could you just remind us? I think that work started at the end of last school year. Is there that is that correct in defining those action steps?
So we we report out progress over the course of the year. We had a report in June and then after that, then the administrative team starts the process and we get together and talk about where we can go in the next year. We look at different sources of information. So the progress made is one thing that informs us. Definitely feedback from parents and students and families. We also take a look at the CRC report. And as you, as Kristin mentioned, we noted that in here where we took several of their recommendations and embedded them into our action steps. And so those are some of the sources from which we start to develop these action steps. And then we meet over the summer and formulate these. We get them to a point where we can meet with the SAT and have the SAT look over them and give us input, input and feedback on those action steps. And then we bring them to you at the committee of the whole as kind of our final step before approval. So that's.
Great, great. I think that's just helpful for the community members to understand. And as Carrie mentioned and Kelly mentioned, we did review these at the committee of the whole meeting last week. And I do encourage people to listen to that meeting because there is a lot of, there's a lot more conversation around many of the topics and the action items, including a conversation around technology. So again, that's from the committee of the whole meeting last week. There are no further questions or comments on the strategic plan. We will continue on our agenda with annual business. Dr. Kremis.
Thank you. All right, we have a summer school and summer enrichment program review. I think Dr. Swanson will lead us in this review and there's a report attached as well. So the summer enrichment program is held every summer. It's composed of three different parts. We have our extended school year program for students with I E Ps who are eligible for that programming. And that's determined by the I E P team based on set of criteria. We also have hobbies and academics, which is a program for students. It's a, it's the fun classes that kids are really excited to take. So things like cooking and racketry, they have academics associated with them, but it might be book club. It might be a running club. So a variety of different classes that are kind of your fun summary classes. And then we also have review and reinforcement, which is a program that we is for students who are eligible based on their achievement in the during the winter map testing as well as by teacher recommendation. So these are kids who who would benefit from additional time sort of reviewing and reinforcing the concepts that they learned during that grade year. So we have three different options. It's a half day program and usually it's three different periods. So while we had, I think, we had two hundred and three students that attended, but many of them attended things in a variety of programs. So they might have attended one or two review and reinforcement classes and one hobbies and academic. So the numbers that are in here are certainly higher than the actual number of students who attended. The program is is usually well attended. I will say that we are, we have been on a slight downward trend in terms of enrollment since we, since COVID. Prior to COVID, there were more students that attended and since then, it's just been on a steady downward trend. We do have the mandate from the board to try and make the review and reinforcement and hobbies and academics portions cost neutral so that it's it's provided for the for our families. But we're trying to really make sure that it is a cost neutral program. As you can see from the overall budget and revenues and expenditures, we did not end this year with it being cost neutral. There was some subsidization from the board. A part of that reason is because we do keep the review and reinforcement courses at a lower tuition rate and the class is a little bit smaller because those are students that need that additional review and reinforcement in order to really solidify their academic skills. It's something we can certainly look at as we move forward and look at our fees for next year. The other area that we definitely lost some money in was transportation. We explored this year perhaps combining our busing with Evoque and it didn't seem to, it did not make sense the way we run it now. We ran one bus which covered all of the entire district. And in order to to also work with Evoque on that, that would have added just that many more stops. So we're going to continue to explore that. We have moved from, it used to be that transportation was provided between every class. Now it's provided only at the beginning and the end of the day. And so I think that that's something we can continue to talk about. There certainly were not a lot of families that took advantage of that transportation. So that may be something that we even discuss if that's an option that we want to continue to offer. Those are some things that we'll continue to evaluate and and look at as we start our planning for next summer. Other than that, does anyone have any questions?
Board members, any questions? Ms. Stone?
Yes, so if I'm understanding correctly, so kids who's kids who qualify for E S Y or extended school year are in some of these classes, right?
Yes.
So is the, sorry, go ahead.
No.
Is the downward trend in enrollment impacting those kids more, less or about the same as the kids who are in the program who are not?
It's probably not impacting those students much at all because those students, it's a, it's a yearly decision on whether a student makes qualifications based on their progress during the school year, whether they regress over holiday periods. And we will open as many classes as we need for extended school year because that is a requirement.
Okay, I guess I was thinking the amount of kids who actually enroll. Maybe I'm not being clear.
No, we, the students that enroll for E S Y is typically very close to the number of students that that qualify. Not all do, but most of them.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other board members? Mrs. Malling?
You may not know, and nothing comes to mind for me, but I just wonder if other community programs have come about that are meeting the needs of our kids that used to participate before.
That would be my guess is that there, I think that the Park District has a lot of robust programs that a lot of students are participating in. And our program is a half day program. And so I think for families who were looking for more robust programming than the park district programs would be probably more of a draw.
Any other board members, comments, questions? Okay, thank you for that report.
And up next, we have the CRC Review Committee at Large Members. So the Community Review Committee, also known as CRC, serves as in an advisory capacity to district thirty nine's Board of Education to research specific topics that lead to improvements in teaching, learning or managing the district's operations. We've mentioned this group several times this evening as we have presented the strategic plan action steps. Their work annually helps to inform our work. And so we're really grateful for their service to our community. This year, the CRC is requesting the board approve two at large, members at large for the school year. And that would be approving Aparna Bhaskaran and Miriam Ovington to serve as members at large for the twenty five, twenty six school year. You'll see that later on this evening.
Thank you. We'll continue with board policy review.
Dr. Kowacki, board policy. This is second reading and final reading for several, many board policies.
Just to note, the suggestions that were given at first reading have been incorporated into nights. And for policy eight colon thirty, number sixteen, we added in including e-scooters and e-bicycles. That was the topic of conversation during first read. So we've incorporated that into that policy. And then seven colon one ninety, one ninety student behavior. Under prohibited student contact, number six, we added language that states to create or disseminate false information. So just a clarification, more to the lens of potential AI, chat G P T. Not exactly calling it that, but that some same sense of incorrect or false information. We wanted to highlight that. And so those were two substantive changes since first reading.
Thank you. Board members, any comments? Great, thank you. Thank you, Heather. All right, this is another opportunity for the audience to address the board. Are there any audience members that would like to speak at this time? Again, I must remind you to state your name and community of residence. And by board directive, you are allowed three minutes to address the board or one minute if you have previously spoken this evening.
My name is Lily Yang. I'm a woman resident. And I just want to thank you guys for allowing me to finish my suggestions, action steps. First, cut down screen based teaching time, bring back blackboard, whiteboard and hands-on lessons. Two, push for, push for more pen and paper requires that a significant portion of classwork, load taking and assignment to be done by hand. Save screen time for coding, researching, AI learning. And AI learning session Tony just talked about it. And three, ban cell phone use during school time. Enforce strict rules so phone should be out of sight and out of mind. Fourth, pro- promote real social interaction, create a screen free zone and time, especially during non-channel recess. So kids can talk, can play and build real relationships. There are many things in life we cannot control, but this should not be one of them. Let's work together before it is too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Would any other audience members like to speak?
Hi, I'm Chastlin Shook speaking again, I'm a four in the district to Art Nutria. As many of you know, I've been very active in this community. I've been on the executive board at Highcrest, at Willmet Junior High School, been on the CRC committee and have been the president of past thirty nine for eight years. So I've been with all of you in the trenches and reviewing things, understanding things and helping make this community better. So I'm here today again, asking if we can relook at the technology pieces going forward for the next five years. We did FOIA, a request from ISB and also district thirty nine, asking for a quantitative number of how many hours these children are logging daily on their devices and what apps they're using. And we didn't get any answer. They have no quantitative information at all regarding how much they're using their iPads for. And so I really would love to see if we can start tracking that, how many times kids are bopping in and out of apps, what apps they're in. I also would love to be able to have parents be able to view what their kids are accessing during the school day. I have a child this past week who asked me to pick him up for eighth period because apparently his writing teacher says, when you finish your homework, you can play Wordle. I was like, what? I have another kid that told me how much fun Gimkit's been and he's been on it all day long. So I'm asking if we can just really double check what these kids are doing during the day because that to me is not learning for my kid. My kid needs to be really sitting there, understanding, writing it and hearing it several times, not bopping between screens. I asked my oldest child to come and speak tonight about her iPad usage. And she was like, I would never give my iPad up. And I'm like, why? She's this great, she's got great grades. And she's like, I absolutely love that I can go between listening to the teacher and going shopping and checking my Snapchat. And it's just unbelievable what they can do at their fingertips. And I just really worry that this is just not the path that we want to take. And I just would love to be able to have you guys just really start tracking this and give parents the ability to view what they're actually accessing during the day. I just don't think the iPad as a learning device is solely what we want to be focusing on. So really putting limits on the amount of time they have the iPad during the day would be ideal as well. And our petition has again reached a thousand people. And so we really would like to have everyone in this committee to really consider looking at the petition, which we can read or send over again and really considering some of these changes before the next year is set in stone. And thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board this evening? Thank you. As a reminder, one minute if you have previously spoken this evening.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to try to brush through this. So I know that you are currently implementing S C L in homeroom classes with a high focus on a sense of belonging, especially in grades fifth through eighth. I would like to make a suggestion, removing the iPads. I see in my child's iPad that teachers and students are able to communicate with one another through a device. Let's encourage face to face interaction and put an end to this addictive. Let's encourage face-to-face interaction and put an end to this addictive form of communication. A question, are the schools currently doing anything to monitor the health and productivity of students with the excessive screen time they are being exposed to? As Chastlin mentioned, we put in a FOIA request back in June. The response was as follows. After a careful review of your request, Willmet Public School District 39 has the following response. For item number one, the district has no response, responsive documents. That is, was in response to us requesting aggregated data showing the total number of hours the students at Willmet District 39 spend on school-issued iPads during school hours, et cetera.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
I'll make this brief. I just wanted to really echo everything that else that's been said this evening. There's just far too much iPad use. Again, this whole idea that you can be in school and yet be kind of distracted by other things. You get done with a project and then you can play games or shop or do any of these other things. I mean, you can talk a lot about the effect it has, you know, on your learning, your attention span, and even your vision, quite frankly. But there's another whole part of it too. And that is that if you do have free time, you could be studying something else, or you could just be interacting with your friends. I mean, again, I've said it before and don't mean to sound so reactionary, but, you know, most of us are a product of a different time when we had pencil, pen, paper, blackboard, didn't hurt us any, and it did us a lot of good, you know, rather than just dealing with a glowing screen all of the time. So please, yeah, let's rethink our reliance on this technology. And let's just ask ourselves if it's really necessary to be doing this. Again, we all knew a different and older, and in my opinion, a much better way. So I just ask you to really think about that, the use of devices at school. We, as parents, we don't have any control over it. We've just got to ask you, you know, to really help us out with this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sorry. Hi, Alina Resnick, Willmet. As I said, you know, this is from your website. This is 164 apps that the kids have access to. And yes, it has agreement status and apparently if they were vetted, and correct me if I'm wrong, but have, really has the board and has the IT director really read through every single privacy agreement there. Honestly, are we selling our kids' data somewhere? And last year, if you remember, Power School was hacked. And so whatever data was leaked, we were never really told which students were affected, how much of that data was leaked. So Power School, I imagine, is a pretty protected app. How about all these? 164 apps, not including Google Maps, not including YouTube access from Safari, not including however many more apps there are. So are we protecting our kids at school? Yes, we are protecting them with locked doors and wonderful teachers and wonderful.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Again, thank you all for taking the time to be here and to share your perspective. At this time, the next order of business is the consent agenda under the action items. Are there any items that the board would like hold from the consent agenda? Mrs. Pathless, please proceed with the motions.
I move to approve the personnel report dated September 15th, 2025. I move to approve the District 39 Strategic Plan, Engage, Empower, Inspire action steps for 2025, 2026. I move to approve Aparna Bhaskaran and Miriam Ovington to serve as members at large on the Community Review Committee. I move to approve a second and final reading of Board of Education Policies. One colon one zero, one colon two zero, two colon one zero, two colon eight zero, two colon one three zero, two colon two four zero, two colon two six zero, two colon two six five, three colon three zero, four colon one five, four colon five zero, four colon five five, four colon eight zero, four colon one eight zero, five colon one zero, five colon two zero, five colon six zero, five colon one zero zero, six colon one five zero, six colon two three five, seven colon one zero, seven colon two zero, seven colon four zero, seven colon five zero, seven colon seven zero, seven colon nine zero, seven colon one three zero, seven colon one four zero, seven colon one eight zero, seven colon one eight five, seven colon one nine zero, seven colon two zero zero, seven colon two one zero, seven colon two five, seven colon two five five, seven colon two seven zero, seven colon three zero zero, seven colon three one zero, seven colon three two five, seven colon three four zero, eight colon one zero, eight colon three zero, and eight colon eight zero. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between August 26, 2025, and September 15, 2025 in the following amounts. Educational fund, $332,747.59. ONM Fund, $331,214.26. Transportation, $1,454.88. Capital Projects, $368,503.0. Total all funds, $1,033,919.73. I move to approve manual checks issued between August 26, 2025, and September 15, 2025 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $954,538.82. ONM Fund, $206,760.14. Transportation, $3,198.45. And Capital Projects, $81,333.28. Total all funds, $1,245,830.69.
May I have a second? Second. The motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Anne Hart?
Yes.
And Judy Berlin?
Yes.
Kristin DeCastro?
Yes.
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Katie Hilton?
Yes. The consent agenda is approved. We will move on to conference items. Is there any old business? Any new business? All right. And lastly, good and welfare. Does any board member, do any board members have any good and welfare to share?
I might, but I'm not 100% sure of what counts as good and welfare.
Okay.
So you can tell me if I'm off track because I've heard a couple of people report or mention it at meetings. So I think I got the gist of it. This actually came to me as we, as we were hearing about the, one of the action steps in the strategic plan, and it had to do with outreach to alumni. And I wanted to share with the board, and many who know this, I have three daughters. All three of them went through Willmet Public Schools. All three of them graduated from Willmet Junior High, and all three of them graduated from New Trier High School. And all three of them live in the vicinity, one of whom lives here in Willmet. And I think it is a real testament to the adult alumni of our school system that so many of my children's colleagues, or not colleagues, but friends and people that they graduated with have actually returned to Willmet and to Willmet Schools. They, all three of them, never fail to bump into people, whether it's in the schools or in the Park District. And so when we talk about alumni, we should probably expand our definition because all of it, they have positive things that they, many of them might be willing to share with our district as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss collective negotiations, specific personnel, special education, individual student matters, and semi-annual review of executive session minutes?
I move to adjourn to the executive session to discuss collective negotiations, specific personnel, individual students, and a semi-annual discussion of the minutes of meetings.
Thank you, Mrs. Pathless. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kristin DeCastro? Anne Hart?
Yes.
Katie Hilton?
Yes.
Judy Berlin?
Yes.
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes. Motion carries. We are now adjourned to executive session. The time is 8:21 PM.